It's Monday, August 4th. This is the monthly zoning board of appeals meeting. We have a quorum, so we will call the meeting to order. We have fairly brief agenda tonight. We have two new hearings. The first one is at 30 Beach Street. Let's first just run through tenants. David Morris, present. Charlie Hickenson, present.
Lee Darce, present.
Matt Watkins, present. What do you think?
Present.
I'll hear and accounted for. Great. So who's presenting on 30 Beach Street?
Brendan Sullivan, Merrill Associates. Do I have to stand at the podium?
The microphone is, it's helpful if you stand at the podium, so the...
I'll just stay muted for now.
And you don't have your audio video on.
Oh, I don't need it on really, but. That says Merrill Associates, okay.
No, it's too quick.
Thank you.
You're resting hard enough. I mean, you're red light lighting up, yeah. There we go.
There we go. Perfect.
For the record, Brendan Sullivan, Merrill Associates, representing the owner applicant at 30 Beach Street. So this is just a couple of them down from down on the water side, fighting a little hunger in the rear. The existing, pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure, all within the floodplain. The floodplain is a VE twelve. It goes from VE to the top property. So the entire property is in the velocity zone. The project is to take, just basically take the structure, no addition, no addition to the structure, just basically raise it six feet. So the first foot will go from elevation eleven point four to elevation seventeen point four. Like I said, the pre-existing non-conforming to front yard and both side yard, side yard. Have been with conservation. Like I said, no footprint is changing. I mean, end story, you're really just taking the existing structure. Sorry, two guy garage on the right inside. Basically a cape structure and just raising it seven, six feet to get us on the flood. You don't break weight nails, blow me, blow floodplain. And that's about it.
So this, will this get you above the, like, the 50-year resiliency numbers? There's, I guess the new building code goes up another foot on the floodplain. And then there's a Massachusetts resiliency program that goes up another foot, is that right, John?
Yes, I think your existing elevation, I think you're in two feet above the existing elevation. Or how? What elevation is that?
It's a VE twelve. So we're going to seventeen, so. Plus five feet. So in the velocity zone, the lowest horizontal member has to be two feet above the velocity.
Right.
So the lowest horizontal member, VE twelve should be elevation fifteen.
Is it the framing and the...
Right, yeah. It usually is about, usually is about two, two and a half feet from the horizontal member to your first floor. That's the one foot beam, your floor joists going the other direction. Usually that's about 1.3 feet. So usually, 2.3 is two and a half feet from horizontal to first floor.
All right.
That would be, yeah.
Sorry.
I would expect, but this may be among the first that we'll be seeing of many of these.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Board members, anybody have questions or comments?
When I looked at the application, does it look, it looked to me like it was going up, like, still compliant, but 7.4 feet? But you said six feet.
Yeah, we're going to, what's the first floor is going to be seventeen point four. The existing is eleven point four.
Oh, I think your point was it should be higher anyway to meet the current specs, and you're taking it up an additional amount, which is seven feet as opposed to five. If it were two feet higher.
No, no, once again, it's not the first floor. It's a, in a velocity zone, your floodplain is measured from the lowest horizontal member, which is basically the top of pile. And then top of pile, you usually have a one-foot beam on top of that, and then your floor joists going the other way. If this was an AE zone, it was AE twelve, we would only have to go up to elevation thirteen, we would have to go up one foot. But velocity is, is that much more. At the wave height and everything else.
Anything else?
Being added.
Yeah, yeah, everything will be above the closing. It's on the outside.
Both top and the plan just, I guess.
It's just a note that says mechanical equipment to be raised above elevation fifteen.
Okay, as long as we're covered up by the...
Yeah.
It's actually...
Yeah, because there is a D five generator currently.
And that's going to be the reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone in the audience here? Anyone in the Zoom audience? Raise your hand on the Zoom panel.
Standing hands.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Motion to continue the hearing.
I'd make a motion. Continue the hearing until Mr. Denver.
Right.
Primarily, I think, to draft a decision, right?
Right. Yep. Absolutely. All right. All those in favor of continuing the hearing? Say aye, Charlie.
Yeah.
David Morris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Lee Darce, aye.
All right, so that's 30 Beach. The next one is 10 Atlantic Avenue.
Photographs, they come forward.
Sure.
107.
107.
This shows the corner where the addition or replacement is.
It's in the file.
Some of them you have and some of them you don't. I just figured I would bring a few more.
So for the record, Brendan Sullivan and Merrill Associates, representing the owner of 107.
107 Atlantic. Did I say 107?
You said 101.
No, 107.
No, yes, 107. Christine Nichols being the applicant owner. So this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The structure is conforming. There, so the addition is a small addition northwestwardly, basically a new, a new addition. We've seen the pitches, it's kind of been divouted, entryway that goes up for a floor. We are, we doing stairways, covering entryway. Basically, we have committed both the, from the entryway to the table of the house. So the floor plans. So there is going to be a heated basement entry. The door rear, this is where the new stairs are coming up. This is all like covered porch. The new, the new addition in total is, comes up, the house is about 11 feet, about 21 and a half feet wide. The basement is only about 15 and a half feet wide. So once again, here's the stairway coming up. Stairs come up, landing, the covered, covered landing into the mudroom. The main level of the house, stairways that go down, down to the basement area. So a portion of the, a portion of the roof area is within the 20-foot setback. But at the 20-foot setback, our height from mean grade is only 15 feet. So we're not, we are not higher than 15 feet in height within the 20-foot setback. The remainder of the house is, but that portion of the new addition is not. So here's a tutorial of it here. The stairway's coming up, covered entry, the addition.
What, what's the labeling on that one? What are we looking at?
This is A2 dash zero, proposed exterior elevations.
All right.
It's a little confusing because the diagonal line between the 20-foot setback and between 20 and 15 is on a, is on a diagonal on a hip roof. So if you look on, on A2 dash zero.
Yeah.
If you go four feet in, I'm still below my 15 feet in height. And now I'm, I'm inside the 20-foot setback. So by right, I can go to 35.
Okay.
So that little tri, that little red triangle on the plan is the only portion of the proposed addition that is between 15 and 20. And that's still below 15 feet in height, that little triangle.
I, I was also looking at this July 22nd.
Yes.
Diagram where it shows that there's no non-conformity today, although your application, your application says 19.9, which is one inch.
But that, but even the current corner that is at that 19 point, whatever it is, is below 15 feet in height. So technically, it's still conforming because it's below that 15-foot height.
Yeah, it's a portion of the current entry. It's just a, it's a deck and handrail. It's not, it's not covered.
So that little corner is below 15 feet in height if you look at existing conditions.
Well, a structure doesn't have to be covered.
It's, it's still below 15 feet.
No, what I'm saying is that because the deck is so high, if it was covered, it would be higher than, it might be higher than. But.
Go ahead.
I think that was, that was about it, right?
Yeah, so, so we pointed out that the cubic calculations show the red portion is what is between 20-foot setback and A2, 15. And that is roughly 5.5 cubic feet of the existing structure. So it's very small.
Dave, let it come board, I don't know. It's small, but why, in addition to applying for a special permit under section nine, aren't you applying for a special permit under section eight, non-conformities, creating a non-conformity? Or maybe a variance?
It will be conforming because it's less than 15 feet in height. So what, so it's not, not conforming?
Okay. So are you saying that you're not adding any non-conformity at all?
I'm not increasing a non-conformity. I'm still below 15 feet between that 20-foot setback or is the 15-foot setback.
Okay.
So I'm increasing volume in the floodplain. But I'm not increasing another non-conformity.
Okay.
And the increase in the floodplain is minimal. It's maybe, I think, about 35, 35 square feet. There's just a perimeter wall, the foundation. There will be a floodbed to let the floodwaters.
You know, but if you, if you take a look at the table 5.3 footnote 10, I draw your attention to the fact that footnote 10 deals with this very point, about 15 feet for any portion of a principal building with less than 15 feet in height. At less than 15 feet in height, it doesn't...
It is less than 15 feet in height until you hit that 20-foot mark.
Okay.
And then I can go to 35 feet by right.
And that's... So is it at 15 feet? Is it less than or more than 15 feet?
Look at your plan.
Yeah.
And that triangle that is in red. That is below the 15 feet in height. I could go four foot, one feet into that roof to hit my 15-foot height point, and that is outside that red triangle.
So at that four-foot point, what is the actual height?
That, that's when I hit the, the 15-foot height. But I'm inside the 20-foot setback. I can...
Okay, I see, I can see now, it's...
I think you're looking for the height at the 15-point. If you hit into, figure that.
Right. I can see it on the, on the plan now, it's...
I mean, it's, it's a confusing point to show. But if you look here, that 4.1 that I'm showing in elevation is just above where we wrote cupboard. And that's where you hit 15 feet in height. So at the triangle, the whole triangle is under 15 feet. So here, here, if you look on A1 dash two, the roof plan, that's where it's the most here. And you can see, see the 20-foot setback. The red triangle, the four foot one point is where the roof is at 15 feet in height at this, that bullet point. So I'm well inside the 20-foot setback. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. So see this? So that ball point right there, that's her 4.1 feet, which is that 15 feet in height. We are out here. So this is, so this is 15 feet in height. This is coming down, so this is less than height, less than 15 feet.
Okay. Little, little hard, some lack of labeling kind of gave me some problems.
We found it very hard to label because it's on that diagonal. If I go in the elevation and plan where that 15-foot height is on...
I, I can see what you're talking about. Lack of eyesight was my bigger problem.
Yeah.
We do have the utilities. They will be hung from the first floor voice in the basement, so they also are above the...
Board members, questions or comments?
Okay, so, so the second floor railing, the proposed setback.
Sorry, are you looking at the paint level of where the kitchen is?
I, I don't know, it was a little hard to tell because the orientation sometimes shifted. North was not always to the left or not always to the right. And of course, you're making extensive changes to the house, so it was a little hard to compare, but...
So are you, are you talking this railing here on the exterior?
I'm looking at A2O.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm looking at off to the left. This is all new, right? First floor elevation, 16.5, first floor.
Nope, that's all existing.
That, this is all existing. If you look at the current photographs I just provided, all of this is here. The only part that is new is this stairwell, and I'm replacing and existing. I mean, it's almost a repair and replace.
Now, is it, is that looking north?
This is looking south.
South?
South, yeah.
Okay. It's not labeled, so it's a little hard, it was a little hard for me to figure out, given, given the design change.
North, it's labeled over...
North elevation.
It says north.
Yeah, so that's the north elevation. You're looking, so the north elevation is looking south, correct?
Right. Okay.
So.
So this is...
That's, that's, that's the architect's, you know. Trying to confuse us.
All right, anyone in the audience?
Well, wait, there's one other thing. You've applied under section 9.4, is it, or a relief? Aren't you here before us?
94F.
Yeah, you have to, you, you should make the case why you deserve special permit under that section.
The, is that, that's the floodplain, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the floodplain elevation 11. Like I said, it could be, the footprint is minimal. It's probably about 35 square feet total. It's just a perimeter wall of the addition that's going to be in there. And we have a floodbed to let floodwaters exit and, enter, enter and exit the structure. So it would be floodplain.
The whole goal of this currently, if, if a, if their power goes out and it's a storm, the homeowner's going to go outside on an exposed staircase, exterior staircase, and go down to the basements. It's the only access to the basement. So a lot of this was for security and safety. So it's almost a repair and replace. All they wanted to be able to do is walk from inside their home, be protected to go down to the utilities around the basement.
So there's no big, right now, there's no big access from the floor. You have to go outside and then go inside to the basement. And this also, obviously, it makes the entryway and flood, mudroom bigger.
So, so just review the criteria for 94F, was it? 94F, because I'm not, I'm not challenging you, but I think you've got to make a presentation, brief as it may be, that said, we comply or we deserve a special permit, not, we deserve a special permit. Oh, oh, it's the old 14, isn't it?
Do you want something written up for that, or?
Oh, no, speak verbally.
Put something in the record.
Explain. I mean, you're, you're, you're requesting a special permit under the section 9.4, which is the old 14.4, I think.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that sets certain criteria. It's, maybe it couldn't be 14.4. What, what was the old section? I don't have 9.4. The new one. You know.
I mean, I'll have it in front of me, but I think, you know, as I stated earlier, it's, it's only, it's minimal. It's 35 square feet of new foundation. Existing foundation is probably, it's, it's minimal, it's probably a few square feet. There are some existing posts there holding up the existing entryway.
And we are cantilevering the, beyond the foundation. We pulled the foundation in, so we're not on top of any ledge. Which is why the foundation from Rivermore is smaller than the actual footprint that's above. And conservation didn't provide unanimous approval in last month, so they have reviewed the project.
So you are under, your ground coverage is under 300 square feet? Is that correct?
On, on the ground footprint, yes.
The, the increase is on the...
That, that's the...
That's the main.
Current, section name.
It's now, that's under I, 9.4I? Conditions of granting a special permit?
Do we know what the old one was comparable? I'm...
I don't.
Well, I have the actual town meeting, maybe. See, we have other resource district. So 9.6. Special permit required, that's what they're applying. So, 9.6. New whatever.
94F.
Yeah, 9.6. Special current required in floodplain watershed district. No building or structure shall be constructed, used, erected, altered, or otherwise placed, removed, blah, 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 without a special permit, which has to show the boundaries and dimensions of the lot. All, all that stuff is fine. And existing contours of the land at one-foot intervals.
We're not changing any contours at all.
Yeah, but it says, you know, district, overlay district, no building or structure, which includes stairs. They'll be constructed, used, directed, altered, or otherwise placed or moved for any purpose. No land shall be built, excavated, or otherwise changed in grade, except as permitted by the, either as a matter of right or by the zoning board, apply a special permit.
That's why it was...
But here. Right. So you're saying there is no change whatsoever from...
I'm not increasing the non-conformity. The entire lot is in the floodplain. The current portion of the mudroom that is just over the 20-foot setback is also under 15 feet in height.
That's a dimensional.
Yeah, so there's...
This isn't dimensional as much as any change in the structure and or lot itself, excavation.
So there is an increase in... But we tried to make it minimal because you cantilever the foundation.
Yeah.
It has the same use as it does now, but we've made it safer for anyone who's using the property.
Yeah, under, under 9.4K2 is the extension, enlargement, et cetera, et cetera. The board may authorize by special permit, provided that the restrictions and regulations in 9.4 shall apply in addition to those of Article 8. And the ground area coverage of any building structure or structure in the lot is not increased by more than 300 square feet, which is satisfied here.
Yeah.
So that's...
That, that's an and, not, not or. I mean, you can't choose part of that and not...
Yeah.
You must comply with the whole statement.
Right, but I don't see anything in other sections that aren't part of it.
Yeah. But I think it's usually incumbent on an applicant to present a request for a special permit under the relevant section. It's not a dimensional, it's not a setback issue.
That's it, you want more information? Do you want a write-up of?
That you could probably address it verbally.
So we're under that 300 square foot from the increase in the block.
And you're not triggering... And you're not triggering, um, on any, uh, of the, uh, requirements. Say, state that, uh. This reads H, but the proposed structure use is not subject to damage by flooding waves. Both structure use is not less than ten feet above mean sea level. Uh, post construction, blah, 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 will not divert flood flow, that's a criterion, um, post system of drainage or. There's private sewage disposal will not cause pollution, I mean, I think you could easily address those verbally. But you should address them, those are criteria that we, that the bylaws, uh, require us to, uh, consider. And it doesn't derogate from the purpose of the floodplain, uh, bylaw, but. It's not a dimensional, it's not a setback issue, it's, are you, are you impacting flood flow? Uh, that, that kind of thing.
Right, that's so.
Creating any drainers.
So the existing, existing grade back there is approximately elevation, approximately elevation nine. And the floodplain is elevation eleven, um, as I stated before, the, um. The proposed structure will have, you only need one flood vent that's less than two hundred square feet, so we have one smart vent. Um, will accommodate, uh, two hundred square feet of, uh, living area or enclosed area. So we only need one flood vent for the proposed structure, uh, the, the structure is, is, um. Is on town sewer currently, uh, we are utilizing, um, the old septic system for some roof leaders, we're going to tie into. As per, uh, construction comments, so we gotta tie in some roof leaders into, um. An old, uh, an old, um, cistern or, or a septic system to, um, help alleviate some of the runoff. Uh, there was some pond that occurs on the western portion of the property, um, so that will always alleviate, alleviate some of that problem.
But there's no wave action here.
Right, I, I mean, I don't want to, I've already dominated this, probably too much, but you've just addressed. What I think we have to consider and, and absent a, a challenge. From the board, I mean, that's what the board needs to know, or your, your testimony, that you're not diverting flood flow, you're. Taking care of, uh, roof, uh, runoff and unused, or, you know. Cistern, blah, 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 you're on town sewer. I think you meet the criteria, but you've just simply got to say.
Sure.
Maybe you should address the, the utilities, too, you're going to be. You're bringing the utilities.
Yes, all the utilities be raised above the flood.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, well, yeah.
So is there G eight, most criteria? Now. Right, any other questions, come in?
They're working, they're answering on Zoom, uh, Christine Nichols.
Oh. Um, hi, everyone, yeah, uh, Tina Nichols here, I just wanted to say, um, first of all, um, I. My brother Michael Berman is also an owner of the house and, um. I just wanted to clarify that what we're trying to do is, it's not really new construction per se, I mean. We are rebuilding the mudroom, but the mudroom and that staircase have been existing. On the property since our parents bought the house in nineteen seventy-two. Um, we moved in in nineteen seventy-three when I was nine and we're simply trying to, um. You know, preserve the structure of the property, the stairs need to be replaced. The mudroom was not really properly built to code, the, it's currently, the pylons. Piling sit on top of the concrete slab, so it's not properly pinned. So we're trying to address those issues and, um. You know, improve the property so that it's safe for everyone to use, um. The, the lower enclosed portion of the proposed new mudroom is not going to be finished. Space, it's not going to be living space, it's just going to be storage. And essentially, we're not really expanding beyond. The footprint that's already there, except to, if you took the stairs that are there and just enclose them. So we obviously need to go out a little bit so that, you know, we can enclose the structure that's currently open. Um. So it's, as Heidi and Brendan both said, it's, it's really a minimal impact. Beyond what's already in existence and has been since at least the early seventies. I don't know if that helps at all, but I just thought I.
Thank you.
Add that.
Oh, hi, I think you called me, but, uh, this is Martin Nee and Helena, we live right next door. And we, uh, look out right at the, uh, mudroom in question, uh, we enthusiastically support the application. Um, we just think it's a, you know, it's a great improvement. Um, and it also will enable this family that's lived there for. I don't know how many years, Tina, forty or more, uh, to stay in Cohasset and enjoy the home with their. Children and grandchildren and, uh, we're just very much in favor of it, um. And also, uh, I'm not a zoning expert, I do spend a fair amount of time in front of zoning boards and, um. You know, I just want to impress what Tina just said, the, the mudroom is there, the only, the only. Addition to living space is making exterior stairs interior, just so they can. Get to the basement if they need to in a storm or what have you, and, uh. The whole thing, including the exterior stairs, beneath it is an impervious concrete. Slab, so there's no increase to any impervious, uh, material and, uh. I just thought that was important too, because, um, you know, it's, it's not a further encroachment from the standpoint of anything being impervious. And so with that, we just want to express our support and, uh, we hope that the board. Uh, will consider it, uh, favorably, thank you.
Thank you, I did.
Thanks, Marty.
Letters from media to butters, so you should have.
Yes, I was just going to note that for the record that we do have letters from a number of the butters, which we always appreciate. All right, anybody else have anything, or any hands raised on Zoom? All right, anything that you'd like to add? Have a motion to continue the hearing until our September meeting.
Make that motion to continue this until September hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, um, all those in favor of continuing the hearing on one oh seven Atlantic. Until our September meeting, please say aye, Dave McMorris aye.
Matt Watkins aye.
Charlie against an aye.
We do, it's done.
Woody, check it out.
Very good, we've continued one oh seven Atlantic Kavanaugh, thank you. All right, that, um, concludes our hearings for tonight, we do have. Uh, some administrative matters, I do not believe we have any closed hearings to deliberate. Correct, Julie, no deliberations on closed hearings? Okay, we do have meeting minutes from April, May, and July to review. Which were. I read through them, I thought they were, were last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pretty thorough.
I thought they were very thorough, yes.
That's the two we're representing at the meeting.
Yeah, let's take them in order, now, the first one is April. Everyone had a chance to look at these?
Yeah. Page two is a. Really needed.
All right, on page two of, wait a minute, which one do you want here?
This one, May.
Well, we've got.
No, April's the first one, isn't it?
Yep.
Is it April?
There is April, yeah, April first, it's the first one we're looking at.
What? Oh, April.
April, yeah. Thank you.
Is there a question on these minutes?
Uh, no, I don't have any, I don't think so, Charlie's looking through them, see if he had any notes. Yeah, I didn't have any changes on April, anyone else have anything? All right.
So make a motion to approve the April meeting minutes. Written.
Sir, second? Second, I'll second. Okay, all those in favor of, uh, approving the April minutes as drafted, David Morris aye. Charlie?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Lee?
Charles, aye.
Great, okay, so we've done April, next is May, and Charlie, you had a note on page three, was it?
Two.
Page two.
Uh, bottom, full. Chair McMorris asked Mr. Murray if there was any other relief needed, that they were pursuant. Sammy.
That they should be pursuing. Better pursuant. Catch?
Not a big deal, I was a remote candidate, wasn't I, President?
Wasn't that when you thought you had COVID, your wife had COVID?
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have anything on May? They want to add or subtract?
Motion to approve being made minutes.
There a second?
Second.
Right, all those in favor of approving the minutes for May? Fifth, twenty twenty-five, Dave McMorris aye, Matt?
Matt Watkins aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lee? Charles, aye.
Charlie? Check it out.
Thank you, okay, May is approved, next, so there's. There's no minutes for June, or do we already?
Last month.
Last month, okay. This was the.
The one case that didn't succeed.
Yes. And we haven't heard anything further on that, is that right? On that, um, the application that we had at, was it one twenty-one Giroux from Rowan? Nothing new, okay. All right.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the July meeting minutes as drafted.
You seconded it?
All right, all those in favor of accepting the July meeting minutes, Dave McMorris aye.
Matt Watkins aye.
Charlie against an aye.
We do, it's aye.
Woody, check it out.
All right. July minutes are approved, um, our next meeting is scheduled for September eighth. It's the Monday after Labor Day.
I've got two requests, I had a hard time going through one oh seven. The application tonight, because of labeling, sometimes it was labeled as north elevation. Sometimes it was nothing, and because of the exterior, changes to the exterior that are being proposed, I had a hard time orienting. Orienting myself, what I was looking at, and sometimes the north, I'll make this up. But it's true, the north elevation went to the left, sometimes it went to the right, and. So I had to turn the thing upside down to kind of understand, it would just be helpful if they would label it. I mean, if they just tell me that, that north is now.
Which you're looking at, yeah.
Now, I, now I know what to do, I turned the paper upside down, but, um, I did probably spend. Just, oh, they would label all that. Stuff, and of course, well. Yes. Wish they, the other, the other request would be that if an applicant, um, files for relief under some section. That they in fact prepared to address that particular section.
Section, yeah.
Just for the record.
Mm-hmm, I absolutely agree, I. It, I had a hard time finding the criteria that we were supposed to be addressing, with the changes. Um, all right, the new hard copies ready soon?
John, you better pray gently.
For the, the bylaw, uh, so there was an update from the town clerk, uh, that they are not printing hard copy bylaws.
Okay.
Are they going to buy me a laptop?
I'll just see if it's an actual book, uh, but we, we thought we might, uh, print out some copies ourselves. At least issue for the board, see how that goes, just from a practical step standpoint, I, I think it. Talking thoroughly, I think someone outside is only doesn't know how. It's, you can't toggle between things and.
Mm-hmm.
Get one piece of information that you really need a, a book to go back and forth and reference the different. Different sections, uh, that everybody sells, so I think we're going to internally print them up, uh, mostly. On what's on. The E codes and then distribute them.
Good.
Yeah, perhaps a little index would be done, that, uh, new, new section nine is old section fourteen and. No change or, you know. There was a change, I, I don't know, just something, some way, because I, I feel sorry for the applicants, they, they get. You know, what they get is a, is a two-year-old copy of something that's.
And I thought the same way, because sometimes people come in and I have to go between the town warrant. E codes and the my old paper, so I'm like, wait, wait, that thought was changed.
Mm-hmm.
It is, I believe everything is updated on E codes now, because the, uh, state. Attorney General Office, how they approved everything that we had from the town meeting, I don't think there's anything outstanding, I'll double check. Uh, that's why I've made it to print anything.
Yeah.
Get that, those file.
That makes sense, but if I were an applicant and, and I were handed a twenty twenty-three. That makes sense, but if I were an applicant and, and I were handed a 2023 copy of the zoning board and I file under section 8.7, only 8.7 is now 8.3.
Yeah, and they're all direct, they're all... They're all direct to E-codes, too. Believe it, they, people are gonna ask me if they could get buy a copy of that. So, but at least we'd like to get you guys a copy, so, just for a functional standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
So much easier to talk. Sit at the phone and try to read it.
Julie, is tomorrow like the selectmen doing appointments? Saw that on the agenda. Do you know, have they expressed what they're going to do? Because I haven't heard anything from any of them.
I haven't heard anything. I know it's tomorrow, I don't have any further information.
Okay.
After tonight, they may not appoint me. I may get a permanent vacation.
I thought you were, you're already there, you're already safe.
To load you and throw you out. Excited.
We can't let that happen.
All right, so... And a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
No, new applications have been submitted.
Okay, did they get the 20 plus?
Not, no, he, I'm waiting on, he sent me some plans, but he said he was gonna send... Force engineering had plans drawn up, so he's gonna send those as well.
So, wow, so in fact we may only have carryover.
Two quick...
Yeah.
Special permits?
We're gonna have to make an assignment. Race, oh no.
Oh, Julie.
That's right, oh.
She's permanently assigned to do the, to draft the decisions.
Drafting decisions, you're so good at this. A relief.
So it's, we're coming up on a year. Yeah, it was a year in July. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I can't say that I really miss it much.
Hey, John, John Crosstable. My email on signs was a literal take on what the bylaw says as opposed to what I might personally feel or think is practical or, you know, inappropriate, modern, you know, a 50-year-old bylaw. You know, the time of... Now, other concerns and, and not much going on. Is there a process now that the bylaw subcommittee has been, you know, dissolved and, and town meeting was voted on to buy bylaws to take a look at a couple of things they didn't touch that maybe, in my estimation, maybe they could, I don't know what was any process.
I, I think... Minor change. That's the point, they tend to get a little... Larger than it would be something that you would necessarily send. Um, maybe... There are a few changes made, a little bit minor because... Update, but in that, I get together, just list of problems on the table.
Yeah, I mean, to the board, I, I'm torn. Torn because I don't like to ignore the written bylaw and not apply it. But in some instances, ignoring it or whatever is more sensible than a literal application of something, as you say, that was written years ago that might have addressed circum- circumstances that are no longer. But I, I just hate to... I, I kind of like to be literal about, you know, I mean, within reason.
Well, I, and I think it's, there is some importance to that because, you know, if someone is considering opening a business and wants to get some signage, they need to know what the bylaw is so they talk to the landlord to make sure they get what they need. Because it's not, I mean, it's not effective for them to come to us and say, you know, landlord's screwing me out of the sign space, because we can't do anything about it.
Landlord told me I could put a sign up.
Right, but...
Or I wouldn't have bought the business.
And, you know, if it comes to us, we just have to enforce the bylaws that's written, so... Kind of...
Actually, John, are they, is Stoke gonna do anything different with their sign after our meeting?
Well, that particular one, 3A, that sign would be allowed, but the sign is less than 15 feet from the lot line. So it's a dimensional issue as opposed to there, because they do have additional 200 feet frontage so they can have two signs. Yeah, but again, the addition, they wish to add another sign, but that's to be set back 15 feet. The existing sign... Again, I don't know when it was, how long it's been pre-zoning structure or not, they didn't tell me. The existing sign is within the setbacks 15 feet, so that's where it's not allowed.
Yeah.
Lot frontage, so that's, yeah, so, yeah. Permission if they wish to put a new sign up, it has to be, be the setback requirement, so.
Which sign are you referencing?
The white one, I mean, are we talking about the white one?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be too big for them to use, or?
No, that's an allowed size. I think if the size was, we would measure it and...
Are you talking about the sign that was covered over?
Yes.
That's, that's not allowed, period. We've had five different zoning decisions that denied that use.
Yeah, it's in the setbacks, so that's why, that's why it's not allowed.
Remember, in a corner lot, only one, there's only one front lot line.
Right, but it doesn't refer to the front one, you can have a front lot line, but it also gives you permission for every 200 feet you have a sign.
But there's three lots now, right?
But then they're all owned by one person, but that...
But the by, but this is where the bylaw goes off kilter, I think, a little bit, because, because they're separate lots.
For a lot, although they only have one frontage. Again, that's more than 100 feet plus 200 feet. It's one front line, but it still has that frontage on Sawyer and...
You're not allowed to have frontage in Sawyer. That's not, that's not, the bylaw says twice in two different places that on a corner lot, only one lot, uh... One lot, there can only be one frontage. On a corner lot.
Right, and they have more than, I think they have 400 feet of frontage, 3A?
3A is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but whatever they have in Sawyer Street doesn't count.
Yeah. But, but I'm still saying they have enough for two signs with the 200 feet, 200.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I also find that given that three lots are owned, whether they're owned in common or not, the prohibition of, of, not, of, uh... Signs that advertise a, a business not on that lot. In other words, you can't advertise a business that doesn't exist in that lot. But, but it's indistinguishable, you can't tell, nobody could, would know where the lot line is.
Yeah, but he made the lot lines.
Yeah.
And it's, it's the...
Plus, I think it was approved by the planning board.
But they can't approve the zoning bylaw.
Well, I'm just saying the sign structure was approved by the planning board. It was on, it was on the approved plan that they approved. 10 years ago now. But I don't know, that's all of it. So it's... Well, it can't work, but again...
Yeah, yeah.
15 foot setback it didn't meet, so I...
Well, that, that's enough, okay, that's good, but I think if the, the bylaw should be enforced or changed, and I'm not opposed to change, but it's, you know... But they have a bylaw that says X and, and we allow Y, it concerns me from a pressing...
Yeah.
Standpoint.
Because the other issue there was when he came in and said, hey, some of these businesses here have three signs. You can't have three signs, but then we give them a permit to have more signs in front when the one is in the back of three signs. It's kind of like sneak a third sign up if you...
Yeah. And all of a sudden, everybody's claiming three signs and...
Mm-hmm. Because I think that was...
Pylon or two.
I think that was kind of like the common sense approach of his application was, other people, and here's a bunch of examples, have three signs.
Yeah, that doesn't make a risk.
That's what we would like to have, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Well, plus he said he had it in his lease that he was able to use that sign. That, that was a contract with somebody else.
That the owner could grant.
Yeah, and, and it's also a contract with a third party, it's not... Anything that goes by the law.
Right? We're, we're off of Zoom, right?
No, we didn't adjourn yet.
Oh, we didn't adjourn. Well...
Anyway, it's, there must be a procedure to...
Well, because here's where it gets a little tricky for the, on the signs in the business, it says... On the, the larger the front side, it says, one other accessory sign either attached or freestanding, not exceeding 40 square feet in area for each 200 feet of lot frontage on a street. Provided that only one such sign is permitted for a lot having less than 200 feet.
Right.
So... Lot frontage.
Yeah, but twice in the bylaw, the bylaw says on the corner lot. Oh, maybe you're not talking about the corner, the stoked piece.
Right, but you, you still have that, you know, for every 200 feet of frontage that you have.
Sure.
One side, so this...
You got the sign, yeah, was it 40, 50 feet, what did you just say, 50?
Of 40 square.
40 square feet. But what the, what's happening is that there's a third sign and, you know, stuff hanging off and...
Yeah.
You know, banners and...
As I say, I think, I think we have some work to do there.
Yeah, I think so, because if, if I were, there's that one storefront that, one store on that building that was unoccupied until recently. And now that person wants one or two signs, but they've already used up the 40 feet of signage times two. Not, not, not that particular occupant, but the owner of that plaza exceeded what's allowed.
Well, plus there's all the empty storefronts at the bottom of the apartments.
Right, well, yeah, there, they, there's, there's no available signage for any of those stores, but... Right, without a change.
They're gonna have to put another...
We'll have to reduce the signage that's already there and...
Yeah, because, matter of fact, it was just an application to take the, is it Bridger Kier Center company?
Oh, in the bottom of the apartment buildings?
Yeah, next to the golf tavern.
Oh.
One over, but right now it says Cohasset Plaza, so they want to take over Cohasset Plaza. Signage, eliminate Cohasset Plaza, Bridger Kier. And that would be their street sign. That just came in today.
As long as they're not expanding.
No, no, that would be the...
Signage.
Yeah, I, I think they were under the 40 square.
Well, you know, it's just proliferation is a concern, but I don't think one can lightly say that's good, that's bad. I, I think there needs to be a little more consideration. Visual clutter, the need to, you know, identify what's there. I mean, we don't want people driving in 3A kind of, where is that place, you know?
Well, I mean, if you look at someplace like Derby Shops, there's one sign. They don't fit on the sign, then, oh well, then you have to go in there. But on the, on the main street, there's one sign and not all the, not all the buildings, not all the stores are listed on that big main one, that eliminates a lot of them. You'd have, you have to go in and drive around to see where it's at. Yeah, but because there, it's not on the street side.
No.
The, and, and not even all the stores are, are not listed on the marquee, the, the one on the main street.
So they must have a similar bylaw and have exceeded or reached the maximum allowed.
Yeah.
Much tighter.
Well, I'd like to see Espia tighter, too.
Well, Woody, maybe we should take a look at Hangham's sign bylaws. And see how they compare to ours, because that, I mean, I noticed that there... There's only one for every, trying to think, because I work up there, there's only, you know, one sign for so many of the buildings that any of the shopping areas.
Right.
There aren't, you know, when you go into the Stop and Shop, I mean, there's, there's so many... There's so many signs everywhere, I mean, in all different places. So there's no uniformity, there's some big ones, there's some small ones, there's colored ones, there's... So...
Right. I meant to down. I would never lock up, yeah.
Well, it's not just that locale.
I, I don't. One that brought the most attention.
That's because there are probably 30 or 40 different establishments, some of which are, have three signs.
Yeah.
I'm counting that in, but we get a lot of signage.
Yeah, with, with that, they have a restaurant row.
Yeah. One identification might suffice as opposed to three, but anyway.
Every, every town needs one.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor of adjournment, Dave McMorris, aye.
Aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Woody Chitik, aye.
Darceau, aye.